Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We're going to get started if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Blair has our dog from the kennel today. And thank you for attending. Today is February 19th, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Kaloe is not here today. His daughter is having surgery, so he's with his family today. So it's Betty and I running the show.
This is a lab mix. It's a male. It was strayed found on Ferndale Avenue in Sheffield Lake. It's available for adoption on February 24th. It's in cage number 16. If you're looking for a dog, he'd make a nice pet, nice calm animal. Stop out at our Lorraine County Dog Kennel or check us on the website.
Our thought for the day? The difference between a successful person and others is not a lack of strength, not a lack of knowledge, but rather a lack in will. As soon as Betty sits down, Teresa, you're on.
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye. There are no advances or repayments.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions within the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have some matters of ongoing labor discussions that I wish to talk with the board in executive session at the conclusion of a regular board meeting. It's an allowable topic under the Sunshine Law. Also, potential new hire at Golden Acres, which is also an allowable topic. So at the conclusion of a regular board meeting, I would request that we return to executive session. It shouldn't be too long.
Okay. I do have an 11 o'clock meeting. We'll be out by then. I saw that Ted wasn't going to be in until 11:00 originally from the surgery, so I made an appointment to go over to the Justice Center to check out the wall or no wall.
Oh, my goodness. I would say about 15 minutes.
15 minutes, good. Thank you.
I approve and waive the reading in the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for February 12, 2009.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Proven enter into public-private partnership agreement with IRRS. This agreement applies to Ohio Department of Development for diesel emissions reduction grant program under Section 512.35 of House Bill 562 of the 127th General Assembly, and provides funding to replace or upgrade diesel equipment through a variety of technologies which are installed on equipment to reduce consumption of diesel fuel and reduce air pollution emissions. Authorized County to Service Fiscal Agent effective February 20, 2009 for life aesthetic grant containing a 30-day written cancellation clause, and authorized County Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as due form.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, we have Jack Siffert here from IRRS. If you'd like to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Jack Siffert with Manager Shop and Field Operations for Industrial Railway Switching and Services. We're an Ohio corporation located inside the steel mill, the Lorraine Tubular End of U.S. Steel. I'm here to answer any questions anybody may have concerning our lean and green locomotive project.
And that we're just helping you to acquire a grant? Is that correct?
Correct. We need a public-private partnership for the federal money.
Good.
Commissioner, I met and we sat down and discussed this grant. Actually, we'll be acting as the administrative agent and the fiscal agent for the grant, but as a more or less a conduit with regard to the funding in accordance with the grant application procedures. A private investment is needed for the match money to access the funds, and so we'll have a good collaboration. And there is, I'm certain there'll be some administrative dollars available within the grant to offset our administrative costs here, to work collaboratively within the partnership to bring these resources to Lorraine County. It's a great opportunity for us to partner with the private sector on emission controls, which everybody knows green is the place to be today. It should have been the place to be a long time ago, but right now, funding's available, and I would encourage you to enter into this partnership. And Mr. Twining also looked over the application. We're very, very comfortable with the direction we're taking.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
I'm up for the questions.
That's all. Thank you. Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Proven enter in MOU with Northern Ohio Commuter Rail Coalition to formulate an RFP for completing an alternate analysis with completion date of eight months from word of contract or by February 2nd, 2010, whichever comes first. Authorized creation of a new fund for deposit of said monies to be used for the local match. Congressman Sun obtained a federal earmark of $344,000, and the analysis will cost $414, therefore a local match of the difference is required.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve and entering cooperative agreement with members of Region Four, which includes Huron County, Lorraine County, City of North Ridgeville, and City of Norwalk, in order to apply for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds in the amount of $2,376,372.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under Workforce Development, approve and enter in contract with JGD Associates, Inc., Avon Lake for vendor training with income net worker funds. The amount requested is $8,838.82 with an annual contribution of $4,418.41, and income net worker training funds in the amount of $4,418.41. Authorized County Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as due form.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have someone here to discuss this.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the Board. We have with us today JGD Associates, an engineering firm from Avon Lake. They are coming to Project 10 to do training in some computer programs, Access, Excel, AutoCAD, and SolidWorks. We have with us today Natalie Trapp, who is the main office administrator for the company, who's here to talk a little bit about what they're doing with the grant dollars and what the company's doing as a whole. Natalie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This grant is going to allow us to train our employees. Our company is growing, and we want our employees to grow with us right now, and the best part is just to get them experienced with what we do and have the best knowledge, so we can build within and not have to outsource any of, any employees or anything that we have to do that's growing within the company.
That's good. We like to hear growing companies. That's good two words in the same sentence.
Thank you.
Madam President, it was about a week and a half ago, we had members from the state down from the Department of Development and Workforce Development, and Lisa Pack McDaniel was here, and she's heading up the Workforce Development under Lee Fisher, although I understand that Mr. Fisher is going to be leaving the Department of Development shortly. And they haven't named a replacement. They still continue to be very impressed with this program here in Lorraine County. This was their second trip here, and we had the opportunity to have them here in the Administrative Building and to look at all these programs and tour the growth partnership on the 5th floor. And we, we still continue to see amazement when people come here about the good programs that we're developing collaboratively, collaboratively under that umbrella. And I'm hopeful, and that's the reason we had them here, is that we'll continue to try to put this forward as a model for the state to follow with regard to local objectives with income net worker training. And the state has a fairly good program. It's great for big businesses, but there hasn't been enough initiative with the medium-sized and small businesses. So there should be more to follow in the next couple of months, but it's another great program. We're trying to get this money spent, and so these companies are out there. I'm going to keep pumping this. If anybody watches this, you know somebody's got a business, get them in to see us. They can contact us any way they want. We'll make sure the information gets through to Don, so we can get out there and make, bring the team out and get the applications done.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under CBCF, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for food service to CBCF, notice being chronicled on February 20th and 27th, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on March 20th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor, authorize communication of a grant with the Office of Criminal Justice for the Victim/Witness Program administered through the Prosecutor's Office, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2009 through December 31st, 2009. This is a refundable grant without a cash match in the amount of $38,537.44 to pay salary and fringe benefits for one full-time employee, and $4,307.07 to pay salary and fringe benefits for the supervisor's salary. Authorized Chief of Staff George Corey to execute all necessary documents.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
And I was asked this morning to take off the dental assistant agreement under the Sheriff's.
Okay.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator.
For the sake of Madam President's tight schedule this morning, I will yield. I have no further comment. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
If we have time, Commissioner, there's just an update on a litigation matter that I can give you, but if we're pressed for time, I can wait till next one.
Sheriff's Report.
Last Thursday, the American Legion Post 118 from Amherst had come in to tell us about the four chaplains. February is four chaplains month, and this morning Ronald Fradley came in, and I know Hal has a picture of it back there, I hope, but he brought us an envelope that has the four chaplains on it and also the stamp, and it's back from 1948. So I just want to thank him for making the trip in. Thank you very much. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you too, Mr. Fradley. That was very thoughtful of you, and that's quite a keepsake that you presented to us this morning. Regarding commuter rail, we passed that memorandum of understanding this morning, and I think it's quite interesting that both of the local newspapers have editorials commenting on commuter rail this morning. I'll just say one for and one again. That's my report.
The Board will sign a proclamation of Lorraine County Alliance of Black School Educators, Inc., celebrating 25 years on February 22nd at 4:00 p.m. at Spitzer Center. Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst Oberlin. I don't want to prolong your meeting any longer than necessary, but it's been awfully short so far. I wonder if the Administrator, the Assistant County Administrator, or the Commissioners would tell us anything about, further about item number 13, or Board Correspondents items 14, 16, or 22. And by that, I mean that even as a, as a council member in Oberlin, we have been getting material already from the Governor's Office telling us about stimulus money and giving us many different versions, or at least announcements, that there's coordination and a process going on that's going to make all these small things into bigger piles and, and get this organized. And I wonder if we can hear a little bit about where this stands in Lorraine County with the county and the state, especially as, or, you know, we have people in Oberlin talking about going straight to Washington on something, and I know that's usually not the way.
Well, unfortunately, and thank you for asking first, Lorraine County is positioned very aggressively with regard to submitting various projects with, through the channels that have been established. One of the difficulties we had was the definition of shovel-ready. Nobody's really defined what they consider shovel-ready. I guess you could look at it real quickly and think that, you know, you can, it's turnkey immediately, but everybody seems to stretch definitions. So how long, how long, how far down the continuum you are with regard to your project hasn't been clearly defined, but we have been submitting, like most folks have, any project that has had any work done on it. With regard to a centralized effort, most of the jurisdictions have gone directly to the state websites and/or through the legislative process to submit their projects. There has not been, nor have we been required to have a concerted central point for local governments to submit their projects. I think that that is because they thought that process would take way too long to get things queued up. I know that our Economic Development Department, Community Development Department have been working aggressively on this, and if you'd like, Rebecca could expand upon this further. I know that she has been, you know, very, very deep and busy with this, and she may be able to explain some of the processes further.
Thank you, Jim, and Commissioners. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program was item 13 that David referred to, and we have been working as part of our region. The state allocated $2,376,372 to Region Four, which includes Huron County, Lorraine County, the City of Norwalk, and the City of North Ridgeville. And within that region, we had to come together as a group to form a planning committee and then identify targeted areas where we wanted to allocate funds to undertake the activities that are specified under the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Those activities would be acquisition and rehabilitation, acquisition and demolition of vacant and abandoned properties, properties that have to be vacant and abandoned and foreclosed upon for at least 90 days. And there are some other guidelines that we have to follow, but what we've done is to work to identify the target areas. We did not look at Lorraine, and we did not look at Elaria, because those two cities received their own allocation directly from the federal government. Our money's coming through the state of Ohio. But we are working on that. In fact, our plan is, the application is to be submitted to the state February 27th. There's a draft copy of the plan online right now that you can see if you go to www.lorainecounty.us. So you can look at that, but we have worked very closely to come up with what we believe is a fair allocation of the funding throughout the region. Thank you, Rebecca.
Does that, and clearly that explains that process, but you were also talking about the stimulation package. I would encourage you to see, I think, I'm trying to remember the young lady out in Oberlin, she used to work for us, that's doing there.
Tia Reed.
Tia Reed's out there. If, if, I'm sure that she's positioning Oberlin with regard to submission of various projects, but if they need some assistance, we will certainly loan it from the county to ensure that Oberlin gets in line, just like everybody else. I think it's going to be chaos at the state level, David. They're probably going to receive thousands of projects. Our major concern was that the big three Cs didn't exhaust the revenue pool before anybody else got there. But what I'm referring to is the big three Cs is Cincinnati, Columbus, and Cleveland. We were really kind of worried that, that a lot of the infrastructure money and the project money would go there. While they have significant needs, and we appreciate being next to a core city with Cleveland, and understand that their infrastructure is much older, we also have pressing needs, though, within some of the smaller communities with regard to public infrastructure improvement. So we're watching the process very, very closely. And we've also submitted packages to all of our legislature folks, because they're working on the 2010 funding, which may very well be tied in to either this package or an additional package that they're already starting to talk about that may come down the road much later in the year. And we will be in Washington on, I think it's March 10th, and we're spending a day on the Hill. And we have a, several of us have a Department of Labor update with regard to workforce development dollars, which we're very, very concerned about the REA Reauthorization Act. So we'll be there working with DOL for a few days, and once the DOL is over, we're going immediately over to the Hill, and we have all our Hill visits being established and set up. And if there's something from Oberlin you'd like us particularly to discuss, feel free to, to bring it up to, to our folks here, and we'll certainly make your wishes known. I hope that explains a few things.
I wasn't thinking for just Oberlin, but the whole process, your different departments here.
Norwack is keeping a pretty good list of all that was sent to them, too. I think they can be considered a funnel.
Sure. Are they a friend?
Well, they better be. I mean, they, they don't, they try not to treat one county more friendly than another, but they try to assimilate the information and, and share it best they can. And they're always helpful in sharing what they've got as far as information is concerned.
I know you went through all that already.
Yeah. It's hard to keep up with this, huh?
Yeah. Jeez.
Chuck Recker, 2028 Homewood Drive. This is on the sales tax. With the economy situation, does anybody, anyone believe that the half percent increase projection will collect $15 million? I'm requesting an April 1st to June 30th, second quarter, total sales tax collected in 2008 and what was collected in the same period in 2009, and put on the agenda July 2nd, 2009. Then for the period July 1st to September 30th, 2008, total collections in the same period in 2009, and put on the agenda October 1st, 2009. Having collected six months of the new sales tax, will there be enough revenue to keep the Commissioners, A, Plan, doors open and lights on? On October 29th, the Commissioners should be ready for Plan B. Explain to the voters what they should know, the progress and the needs for the half percent sales tax. This will be your last-ditch effort. After the November 3rd, 2009 election, some of the stimulus package should be secured. Hopefully, half-sales percent tax pass so as to have enough funds to at least bring back the Sheriff's Department to make the jail and county safe again. From this day forth, let's join together and get the message out to make sure the half-percent sales tax, so we can get the county government back to as normal as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the Board? Seeing none, then I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and the Assistant County Prosecutor.
I'll second. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel.
We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license.
We also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured or needs extreme medical care.
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE, or register online at ohiorideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geogah and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston and the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that pass through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorain County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorain County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "ham," the suffix meant "home." The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Elyria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorain County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. Leport developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorain County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Elyria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorain County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Elyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorain County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorain County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township, that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen, requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorain County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorain County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorain County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.